Okay, so we are gonna start. We have the communication items. Matt, you can just take over with.
Sure, before we get started, can I introduce our new student?
I think that's a really good idea.
Paige Walling is a junior and she has kindly decided to join us, so she will be a student rep to the board. So, if you don't know Paige, introduce yourself afterwards and certainly welcome her. Thank you Paige.
Thank you very much for joining us.
So with that then, we'll start with some admin communication pieces. Ms. Homberg, do you want to go first?
I'd love to go first, thank you.
Excellent.
Welcome Paige.
Hi. Hi, everybody. Welcome, thanks for coming tonight. Couple of things to report out from our elementary school. Our infinite campus program, as you know, is up and running, our new student information system. Our report cards are due to be sent out to parents tomorrow at noon. So at 11:59 a.m., everything has to be submitted and we're gonna cross our fingers and hope that we figure out all the little glitches along the way. We're in year two of PBIS, as you probably remember David talking about last year. So this year, our focus is on the cafeteria, it's on hallways, it's on recess, buses, and then our newest area, which is the media steam area. So our PBIS team went to Resource Training and Solutions last Thursday, and we talked about what our plan is moving forward and how to just do the natural progression with PBIS, which is strengthening the things that we've already done and improving those areas that I just discussed. And our ELA teams have been meeting, and at the elementary level, that means that we researched our best practices and moving forward, we'll talk a little bit about what that'll look like for our instructional purposes. At the high school, middle school level, that team has decided to go back and look at their curriculum documents and curriculum maps. Because of the changes that we've had with scheduling and many of our course offerings, they want to make sure that we're meeting the standards and then try to find out where our needs are, where our gaps are. Our enrollment is at 407 at the elementary school, fantastic. We had three new kiddos come to us this morning. We had a kindergartner, a second grader, and a fourth grade student. And as we've talked about at every meeting this year, our second grade has now increased by one again. So we are the proud, we're the proud owners of 55 second grade children, which in two classes means that we have 27 and 28. And so we've been having meetings discussing what our options are, because those are obviously very large and we want to meet the needs of all of our learners. Look for more information to come on that one. In grade level meetings, we, the third week of the month, there's always grade level meetings at the elementary school, and we'll be looking at progress monitoring data. And you'll find out a little bit more about that when Mrs. Grothie and Mrs. Rasmussen talk in a few minutes. Do you have any questions?
What is the increase percentage for the total year that you've had at the elementary school? Do you have any idea?
I know that when I started here, our number was 399, and it varied within a one or two students. We did have several students that moved out of the district since the start of school. However, 407, 405 is typically where we've been since the start of the school year.
Awesome, thank you.
Absolutely.
I just had a comment. So it's been really cool, I think students are talking more and more about new students coming in, which I think teachers have been proactive and telling them how to be welcoming. So I think that's really positive, that students are aware and new students are coming in. How do we welcome them? And I appreciate that.
Absolutely. I'll share that forward, thank you.
Can I just add a couple of things with second grade? So obviously, we're having some discussions and kind of brainstorming some possible solutions. Obviously, I think there are some families and parents that are concerned with class sizes of 27, 28 for second grade. So look for some solutions and some possible directions that we can go coming. It is something that we're working on and we share that concern as well. And so it's a matter of how we can best move forward to make sure everyone's needs are met. So look for those in the coming week.
I do have to say, it's kind of a good problem to have.
Agreed, right? It's wonderful. We share the emails, wonderful.
We can hurdle over some of these things or jump over a few of these things as we need to.
Absolutely.
It's a great problem to have.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
I just got the roughing of basketball games, excuse me.
He missed a few calls too, by the way.
I'm pretty sure I was perfect.
Not from our standpoint.
And we won.
Well, we did win.
Okay, well, a few shout-outs. First of all, to Max and the football team for making another state tournament run. We're excited. We have some things organized for the pep fest and send-off and spectator buses, and so just appreciate Amy and Katie for, and Community Ed for putting a lot of that together. The musical, Footloose. I don't know what to say. It was just, it was so awesome, and it was so much fun to watch. I had the chance to watch it when they performed it for the high school students and then on Saturday. And I was just thoroughly impressed. Lot of people to thank. Theron Knowlton, band director with our, with the pit band, where you could see them. I thought that was so cool, that they were just kind of in that area. And also, Shar Strand, Kari Schumacher, Mary Jane Kane for really, really stepping up and helping out with Cheryl out. And we just appreciate all that they've all done to make that really a successful musical and many other people that I'm sure I'm missing. But I just, it was just really cool to see and really proud to be at our school. Veterans Day program yesterday. We had a program for the middle school and a program for high school, and students were respectful and the band and the choir sang, and it was just a really, really great way to honor our veterans, so we appreciate that. We are gonna, an email went out to families and staff today. We're gonna have a community meeting on vaping. Stearns County Public Health has been kind of making the rounds to other schools, and so they're gonna come in next Wednesday from 6 o'clock to 7:30, and that will be in the auditorium. And it'll be, there'll be an announcement in the paper this week, and we'll just keep advertising it hopefully to get some families and community members in there. We have started today, meeting in departments and looking at our class offerings for next year and trying to get a head start on what next year's gonna look like. We're hoping that we can do a pre-registration in January sometime, get a feel for what students are interested in, and then get our, get the registration done by the end of February so that we're able to make sure that we have staffing and that we're ready to go with that. So today, Mary and CTE teachers, Mike Gunther, Greg Capstner, and Natalie Ouch, went to Sartell and toured their new high school and walked away with, well, really impressed for one, and just with some ideas and some things that we feel like can benefit our school and our students. So, any questions for me?
Just had one thought. Since that vaping, and I think that's very important, is next Wednesday night, have you contacted the ministerial about seeing if they would maybe encourage their youth groups to come here instead of?
No, we, I can certainly do that.
I mean, you're missing a lot of kids that won't be here.
Yeah.
It's on Tuesday.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yep, I apologize. It is the 19th.
Okay, so that changes that.
Sorry about that.
Even at that, do they allow recording or re-broadcasting it at all?
We're gonna check on that. That had come up today, so we're gonna check on that. Yep. Yep, I apologize for that. It is next Tuesday. Any other questions?
How many, oh, do you have enrollment for high school?
I do not.
Okay.
Nope. All right, thank you.
Feels like I was just here a month ago. We're kind of merging the end of fall sports and the beginning of winter sports. Girls hockey and dance has started early in November. Girls hockey's actually already competed in games. Gymnastics and girls' basketball started practice this week, yesterday. And then, one thing to note is our new gymnastics floor is in. If you remember, there was an issue where we were cited and it was out of regulation, and so that's in. So we're glad to have that time for the season. Junior high boys' basketball's also started. They had a game today here in Painesville. Boys' basketball, boys' hockey and wrestling start on Monday, so it's busy. And I don't know if anybody has any questions for me. That's my report for tonight.
Nope, you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A few items. General Community Ed program report. Our winter brochure goes to the press this Friday. Quite a few new programs and activities in there. We're gonna be doing an innovation exploration for our adults in the community to get them into our Innovation Center, to kind of tour it, and then we're gonna, there'll be free events, and we're gonna find out what they're interested in before we start offering classes or activities that we kind of want some feedback from them. Pause, we're up to 108 now. We continue to grow. An update since our last time I reported, our three-year-old preschool, we were, we kind of pivoted and we were able to get all of our four-year-olds in and add our three-year-olds back. So going, you know, a year ago in the spring, we were, the numbers were really strong. It didn't look like we were gonna be able to accommodate all our four-year-olds in the three sections, so we moved and canceled our three-year-olds and moved to an evening class. And it worked out, so we kind of made a pivot and we're able to get the three-year-olds back, so that those filled up in the first week that we had open. Fitness Center report. Number and, numbers and usage are strong. The longer FIAD classes, so the blocks, and the usage with them using it more, which is a good thing. That does cause some balancing act for us, so we are seeing some decrease in memberships because of that, but it's just kind of keeping the balance and we want maximum usage. Our Bulldog livestream, we completed our fall season with the big game at St. John's. By the end of the game, we had over 2,600 views and we had, through most of it, over 500 people, unique IP addresses on during the whole game. So we ended our fall season with over 7,600 views for the season. So we streamed the elementary Veterans Day program today and did a two-camera shoot with that, and we're selling partnership advertising opportunities for our winter season now. And for the game on Thursday, we still have 10 spots at the 11 o'clock bus and 19 at the 11:30. So if you want to get on the bus to the bank, we already have over 109 people going, so. Any questions for me?
I'll comment again. Your livestream of the sports, sporting events, been amazing. I've actually had a few business owners in town contact, you know, ask me about, wanted to advertise. I told them to reach out to you guys as needed. I think they're trying to figure out a good way.
Email me their names and numbers. We only have two spots left for our gold or silver sponsors, and that's their name throughout the whole broadcast, so good. Thanks for the feedback. It's been fun seeing the kids, you know, producing and doing a really good job with it, so and highlighting the great season our students are having, so.
And Matt, I was gonna say too, that I watched the St. John's game from home, and then I watched the North Branch game from home, and that was Minnesota State High School League livestream. And it was so disappointing compared to what I'm used to.
Not even close.
It was not even close. And I mean, thank you Minnesota State High School League, so I could watch it, but it was, I did miss the quality that we have. And it just highlighted how impressive it is, really.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Well, I had to move some cattle before I got here, so I rushed in, and I'm sure you're glad I changed. We had a playground assessment done this Monday, and they went around and checked all our equipment, and we're in pretty good shape. The only thing he brought up was we have one corner of our swing set that needs to be, the mulch needs to be pushed out another five feet on that corner. We're not quite in compliance with that. Otherwise, I haven't seen the full report, but that was the most serious thing. Horizon Roofing was here today, and they're patching our roofs, and see them up there with face masks on. I just can't imagine how they do this in this weather, but it evidently works. Heat-wise, we're doing fairly good in the building. I got a call this morning from Amy that Dave Wilkie's room was cold, and I get down there and there's a sub in there. And I went and looked at the thermometer, or the thermostat, and it was turned down to 55, and I looked on the floor, he's got chocolate bars laying all, trying to keep his chocolate bars from heating up. So she's sitting in there with her coat on and a blanket over her, but turned up the thermostat, and that was good to go. Other little tidbits, was around the elementary school, just counting doors and just, this will probably just go in one ear and out the other, but there's 222 doors in that elementary school, which has floored me, and I can't imagine how many are in the high school. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Any questions?
Thank you. All right, so we do have a couple of elementary and, or elementary and a secondary instructor here. They're gonna talk a little bit about response to intervention. If you can just hang with me for just a minute to get the technology to work, I'm gonna get them set up at the table, and then Marie and Maria will take it away. One second here. All right, so one of the things that you're gonna start to be going through from the board's perspective is, my hope is that at each work session, we will have some staff members come and kind of give you a little snapshot of something in more detail as far as what's happening. So today, the first invitees are Marie Grothie from the elementary school and Maria Rasmussen from the secondary school, and they're gonna talk about, it's either called multi-tiered instruction or response to intervention, depending on who you talk to, but I'll turn it over to them and let them take it away, and I think there'll be some time for questions if you have some questions too.
Absolutely. Hi, I'm Marie Grothie. I am in the elementary building. I teach kindergarten through second grade, but I oversee a lot of the assessing for kindergarten through fifth grade.
And I'm Maria Rasmussen, and I'm starting, well, I guess I teach eighth grade ELA, and then I also do the RTI, or we're starting up the RTI at the middle school this year, which is exciting and overwhelming and wonderful all at the same time.
And some of our other team members, Kim Golbranson teaches the third through fifth grade portion of our program, and then Chad Campbell, and I'll explain this a little bit more, but Chad is my counterpart at the, or at the secondary building, and is doing reading interventions with me, and Todd Spanier is doing math interventions for our kids.
So RTI or MTSS, essentially, RTI means response to intervention. MTSS is essentially the same thing with a different name, that's multi-tiered.
System of supports.
System of supports, thank you. And there's a lot of component, components that go into RTI and MTSS, and we're just going to go over those with you, and if you have any questions, we can answer them at the end. So a lot of our things involve data mining. Our reading instruction and interventions are centralized around the reading pillars, and then what types of programs and strategies we use for interventions. So essentially, sorry, go ahead.
I'm good.
Okay. So essentially, what it is, is to make it easy and, easy in explanation, is it's a lot like going to the doctor, okay? You're asked to do physicals every year, and they do a broad spectrum of testing. They check out your cholesterol and your blood work and kind of do an overall view of what, to make sure that you're healthy. And then if they do find a number that's completely off, thanks. If they do find a number that's completely off, then they go into some more specific assessments that are targeted at, targeted at what you need. That's a lot like what RTI is all about. We do a nice broad screener or a broad assessment that's quick and easy to give, to figure out what students need additional intervention help or additional instruction in reading or math. So in RTI, when you're thinking about it, everybody gets that core instruction. Everybody's sitting in the classroom for that core instruction for reading, math, science, social studies. Everybody receives that instruction. Sometimes that's not enough for our students, and they're not learning as much as they potentially, potentially could, and that's where that, those extra interventions come into place. Usually, what happens is your whole group instruction will work for at least 80% of your students sitting in front of you in your classroom. And about 15% will need an additional intervention, usually one intervention, perhaps two, and that's where we come in. The bottom 5% are your students who are either in special education or are on the verge of perhaps being assessed after going through our program of interventions. So, go ahead.
So again, just the tier one is just that bottom 80%. It's 100, well, I should say, it's 100% of the students. Everyone gets that universal instruction that's in every classroom and at the elementary school. Do you want to just go really quickly through?
Our core instruction is based off of the, for reading, it's based off of journeys. It's a curriculum that we use to drive our instruction. It has a scope and sequence in what we need to teach for phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary comprehension, and fluency in reading. Our math curriculum, which is Envisions, has a similar, obviously not focusing on those five, but they are focusing on, I believe it's about eight of the math core concepts that are required for graduation, MCA's and things like that.
And then over at the secondary building, last year, we started working on a vocab strategy and a comprehension strategy to be able to use in all of the core classes, so that when a kid is going into science, and then they're going into math and social studies and ELA, they're not all of a sudden getting a brand-new comprehension strategy to understand what I'm trying to teach them in ELA. They're able to get, the comprehension one is called SQ4R, and basically you're going through and breaking apart all of the main concepts and trying to figure out, okay, this is a title, this is a heading, and what is it saying, summarize it, be able to talk it through. But having that one strategy that's very much research-based and effective, the teacher doesn't have to re-explain anything. They just say, all right, let's do, we're on step one of SQ4R. So everyone takes out the sheet and they know exactly what to do to move through that. And then the same with the vocabulary. We've done semantic mapping. Mary Line Decker, when she was going back to get her masters, she introduced semantic mapping and vocab tables to all of us, and so we have just kind of piggybacked on that and use that as well. And again, I think I have teachers in every content area using that. Vocabulary tables, for example, would be, they can choose five key words that the students absolutely have to know throughout that lesson or throughout that unit, and they go through there and they do the definition, they do their own definition, they go on Google and find a picture of it so they can have a visual in there, they connect it to their own life and write a sentence about how they can connect to it in some way, shape, or form, and the weirder connections they can come up with. Usually, those are the words that they remember a little bit more. And so that is universal instruction. That's what it looks like at the secondary building.
So the process for this is you have your core instruction, your tier one instruction. Everybody goes through that screener to see how they're doing according to their grade level. If they score within that bottom 25%, 25 to 30%, that's when we take in a diagnostic assessment. And then we analyze that information, create a plan for them, implement that intervention, and then progress monitor the students. So we talked about that. So universal screening, we are using FastBridge. It's a new program to us this year. It's from the U of M in the cities, and it includes early literacy, early math, CBM reading, which is how many words you can read per minute correctly, A-reading, which is more of a comprehensive assessment, and then AMath, which is more of a comprehensive math assessment as well. We also are still utilizing Renaissance and using it for STAR reading, which is another reading comprehension assessment. And then we meet to make decisions based on this data. So when we start our diagnostic assessing, three things that we are using, one is PRESS. PRESS is a, PRESS is a framework from the U of M as well, and it has, it's a template essentially, that helps progress monitor students and figure out exactly what reading strategy students are struggling with, how to give them an intervention, a research-based strategy for them, go with that, assess them again through progress monitoring, and see if they're making growth with it. Running records is a similar case, where students are reading stories and being quickly assessed on their comprehension of those stories. And then at the secondary building, the secondary building, we have CBM reading. By the time kids get to secondary, a lot of the kids who, we should've made a slide with just the high five of reading, like the skills. So in the very early on young years of children, they're really working on the phonemic awareness, and that means everything that they hear. So that includes rhyming, beginning sounds, middle sounds, ending sounds of words, syllables, being able to manipulate sounds. For example, if I said the word pig and I changed if to ah, you would have pog. Does that make sense? Being able to do all of those listening skills is foundational for your reading skills later in your education, your reading life.
So then it moves on to phonics and connects letters to those sounds. So you can imagine if a student, depending on their background, whether it's their own struggles or family struggles or whatever it is, if they have some holes in their phonemic awareness, then when they go on to phonics, all of a sudden they're getting these letters, but they don't even have the sounds to connect them to, so then that creates some holes. And then we move on from there to fluency. And so then when we move to books and they're trying to read fluently with a nice cadence and a nice rate, but they come across words and they're not really sure how those letters connect to the sounds, because they don't understand certain sounds and how they work in the first place, it's really easy to see how kids kind of fall behind in that. And so at the elementary level, they're working really closely with that phonemic awareness and phonics and building on that. By the time they get to the secondary school, we are working that fourth and fifth tier up there, it's comprehension and vocabulary. So that's really what we're working with. However, a lot of students, because they need a little bit more time, we need to go back to fluency and really work with them on repeated reading and getting their fluency up so that they can understand what they read, instead of just trying to figure out how to pronounce the words and slowly going through a passage. And so at the second, secondary building, the CBM reading, the one-minute quick read kind of gives me a picture of where they're at with fluency, and if they can be quick readers and be able to tell me what they read, then we're ready to move on. And if the diagnostic shows me, wait a second, they don't, they're not going very fast or they're not able to tell me what they read, then we need to go back a couple steps and figure out where those holes are. So that's what the diagnostic does over there.
If a student qualifies for tier two instruction, that's mainly getting them into an intervention with either Mrs. Golbranson, myself, or at the secondary building, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Spanier, or Mrs. Rasmussen. At the elementary, we try to keep the groups in five students or less. There's a lot of research that goes out there that says that you need to have very low numbers in order to make progress with your students. It also, research suggests to have at least four days a week, meeting 10 to 30 minutes a day. So in my position with kindergartners, I am meeting with them for, especially if I'm meeting only one-to-one with them, even in a big group, I do not meet with them for more than 20 minutes, because I have exercised about 10 activities in that 20 minutes that I've had them, because that's their attention span. And that's okay, that's the way it's supposed to be. I utilize PRESS. FastBridge has a plethora of interventions built into their, into their universal screening program, which has been a great thing to... program, which has been a great thing to divulge into. Yes, no?
Sure.
Yep, I'll use that. So, it's been a great resource for us to be able to use and go with that. I'm also going through the letters training. So, the state, Education of Minnesota, offered to have a course in dyslexia training and letters is a research-based strategy, scope and sequence curriculum for readers that I have been utilizing as well and learning throughout the year. And then, we also use a program called Read Live, which is a computerized, nonfictional reading program that works on their fluency and comprehension.
And at the secondary, we are fortunate enough to be able to have enough people so we can meet in groups of three or less. Most of the kids that we meet with, I think we have one group of three and everyone else is either one or two. Five days a week, 10 to 20 minutes for each kiddo. And I just want to give a shout-out to all the teachers at the secondary building, being that this is the first year doing this. I have, not only have I not heard any negative complaints or anything from the teachers, they have been outstanding and so supportive of making sure that they have time in their class so that a kid can get pulled and then everyone is doing work or doing some sort of activity that they can get pulled and work on their fluency or their comprehension and then come back in and get started again. They've been awesome. So, good job to all of the secondary teachers. We appreciate that. The research-based interventions that we use, PRESS, again, the phonemic awareness and phonics, we use a program called FastForward, which is a research-based, actually, it started off with linguistics and then kind of pushed into the academia world. But FastForward is a computer program and it goes back to the nitty-gritty, to the very beginning of language development. And if a student was, or a little kid was in a home where maybe there wasn't all sorts of good things for them, and they missed out on some language development, it goes all the way back down there and has really fun games to kind of boost them and bring them up. Fluency, we do repeated reading and comprehension, reciprocal teaching, and Read Live as well.
If they're in an intervention with any of the teachers who are part of the RTI team, we do something called POMIS monitoring. It's a very quick, weekly, or twice-a-month assessment that they take through FastBridge. A lot of times, it's CBMR, but also for some of my younger students, it's letter names, letter sounds, number ID. Extra Math has been a phenomenal program, showing progress with math facts. If you are a parent or some sort of relative to a second grader, they are just huge into extra math, and it's so exciting to see the progress that the students are making and how excited they are to see what number they're at and if they were able to beat their number for that day. But within that program, it also keeps track of where the students are, so it's nice to see their growth immediately after they've been doing that. CBM reading is just a one-minute reading to see if they're reading fluently. STAR reading would be used twice a month just because it is a longer assessment. And then, Read Live also just has data collection along with the fluency and comprehension intervention that is in it.
And then, secondary, you can see what we do for the secondary. The purpose of progress monitoring, kind of like going with the doc, to the doctor as well. When you're doing an intervention, we want to make sure it's working.
Yes.
And it's effective. And if it's not, then we stop what we're doing and we try something else. So, after we get a few weeks of information, I'm able to look at it and say, wow, look, your fluency is going up. That's awesome. It's working. Let's keep going. And then, it gives them a little motivation to keep going as well. And if it's not working, then we say, let's go back to a diagnostic and figure out if we need to work on something a little bit before that. And so, we do that as we're working with the kiddos.
At the elementary school, our data is reviewed monthly, for sure, with grade levels, if not by myself or my team as well. So, what we do is we meet as a grade level monthly with Mrs. Holberg, along with our school psychologist and our school social worker, and we, everybody looks at their data prior to the meetings that we talk, can talk about whether the students or not are making progress and what we should do for the next step if they are not making progress.
And at the secondary building, Todd and Chad and I talk almost on a daily basis about students and what's working and what's not working, and can we move kids around a little bit, and can we do this or that. But eventually, we would love to be able to go to the bi-weekly or monthly meetings of being able to just look at the data overall and say, okay, here's how we are going to move this child or that child.
If a, if an intervention is not working, then we move into a tier-three instructional mode. That needs to be a one-to-one basis or a one-to-two basis at the max. Usually, this intervention is taking them, as Maria said, way back to a previous, for example, if the child is in third grade, it might take them all the way back to a first-grade skill that they weren't able to master and that we found through a diagnostic assessment. It essentially is giving them that one extra boost to see if we target that skill that we've found a hole in and try and work them forward through that.
And then, depending on where that goes, if it's effective, awesome, we move on. If it's not effective, then we say, okay, they need a little bit more support, and we bring them to child study in the SAT team, and we talk about how we can progress and move forward and help them. And sometimes, that looks like special ed, and sometimes, that looks like bringing a family in and saying, what else can we do to really effectively help your child?
So, these are some numbers for you, if you'd like to take a look at it. So, essentially, we have 407 at the elementary students, and 53 students are receiving interventions in math and reading.
And at the secondary, we have 220 students. And just to kind of give you an idea, we have 34 students in middle school that are in special education, and then we have 65 general ed students that are receiving services through tier-two and tier-three interventions in reading and math.
In kindergarten through second grade, where I said it's extremely fluid, we're reviewing data at least monthly in kindergarten. Kindergarten students, they progress so quickly, but they can also fall behind really quickly. So, my groups in kindergarten are changing at least every three to four weeks, just because the student will probably, could be grasping this, and then they get moved out, but then there's another student that gets to be, that gets to be moved in. So, essentially, in kindergarten, there are years where I've worked with 25 to 30 students just in kindergarten, moving in and out according to whatever their need is based on the data.
So, overall, RTI, MTSS, it's a framework that we have adopted, and can I just say we're so excited that the secondary has it this year? So, thank you, Mr. Bullard and Mr. Orline for really making that happen.
And we're excited that there is, there are options in the secondary building from the elementary viewpoint because you have these kids that you've worked with really hard, and Mrs. Schultz can attest to that because she used to be the 3-5 Title I teacher as, or the RTI teacher as well. It's so wonderful that we're going to be able to pass that data onto that next building and know that these kids are still going to get support and not, and not just get thrown into the classroom with, without any extra support already there for them on day one. So, yes, extra kudos and thank you.
So, overall, three tiers, data-based decisions, multiple research-based strategies and interventions, collaboration of all of us working together. And also, can I add really quickly? When I hear like MCA tests, and we're talking about scores on MCA tests versus the structure and looking at students individually, we're looking at the big picture, but really individually in how to progress and move forward, the one thing I really strongly hate about the MCA test is it's given at the end of the school year, and all of a sudden, we get this number, and it doesn't give a whole lot of specifics on what we can or can't do, but it just says to a kid, you either are at this level, this level, or this level. And the kid sees that as, wow, I'm really smart and I do really well, or wow, I really stink and I'm never going to pass, or I'm never going to whatever. And then, it takes until the following October for teachers to be able to get the nitty-gritty of where the standards are that they're low in or where they're okay. Whereas, this framework, which takes a lot to put together, and it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of different people working together to make this happen, but this is something that we can say, okay, I know every kid in the middle school right now, I know where each of them are at, and we all know what we can do to make each one move forward and progress. And so, obviously, we hope that the MCA's reflect that in the future, in future years. But right now, this is really exciting and it's fun to be able to show kids, look, this is where you were at the beginning of the year, and this is where you are in October, and this is where you are in November. And look, two weeks, you've made this much progress. And to be able to have that along the way, just like going to the doctor and instead of waiting a year and going back and realizing, oh, wow, I really sucked up that year, and that's gone, it's, you're able to look and see these progress checks along the way and be able to say, awesome, let's keep moving forward, okay, let's change this and do something else. So...
And piggybacking off of that, if you think about it, MCA's are given one time a year for two hours.
And sometimes, longer, depending on the kid.
Right. And you never, ever know what kind of a day that child had on that day. I would absolutely despise if my entire academic career was based off of two to four hours of one test, where this is just a continuous way to support our students instead of label our students.
That's it. Do you have questions?
I just have, I think you've answered this, but, so you have reading intervention, you have different types of reading issues.
Yes.
So, let's take dyslexia as well, which is kind of an issue for me. And there's different levels of dyslexia. So, you have to kind of pinpoint, there might only be one student that needs intervention in this particular area, or you don't group the kids together.
And I want to quick say, we can't diagnose dyslexia.
Okay.
We're just getting, so that letters training that I'm doing is training us to be able to teach reading strategies that have been proven to work for students who are truly struggling with any sort of reading, either reading disability or reading struggle that they're working with. And you're right, it varies so much, but there are also students who have not been diagnosed with dyslexia that have traits that are similar to dyslexia, and it's not really our, it's not our job to diagnose that, but what the key is, is to be able to know those strategies and know those teaching components that are needed to be able to assist them in their reading. Does that make sense?
So, if a parent does have an occasion, thinks there might be a problem with dyslexia, where do they go to get assessed?
A doctor.
A doctor.
A doctor.
But you can, you can recommend, refer, I mean, you can...
I can't say anything. If I recommend a student to go to a doctor, I have to pay for them to go to the doctor. So, I could say to a parent...
Well, like, the school nurse told me, yeah, that she's not, that they're not allowed to, I think he, actually, when it was, we're not allowed to diagnose anything, even like nearsightedness, you know, with an eye chart.
Yep, absolutely.
But, he is able to say, you might want to get your kid checked.
Yep, absolutely. We can say they have some traits that are similar to that.
Okay.
But we cannot diagnose that.
And I think the other thing that's important, too, is, you know, if a family does go to a doctor because they're concerned about dyslexia, or any other potential concern as to that might prevent their child from meeting life benchmarks of learning, most of those medical providers will bring the school into that assessment that they're going to do in their medical clinic.
Yes.
And get a parent to sign off on a release to be able to have a classroom teacher maybe fill out a survey.
So, they would have access to what you guys know?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
But the one thing that I can say about dyslexia also is, you know, it is something that is, it's kind of a statewide discussion that's going on right now. The best thing about it is exactly what Maria and Maria are talking about, is in order to really address dyslexia, developmentally, our reading curriculum needs to really be a multisensory approach. It is the best way to expose kids, even if they have dyslexia, in order to develop strategies in which they can cope and basically learn best with those dyslexic traits. And that's what's exciting to me when we start talking about being able to do some diagnostic assessment of students and really dig into the why behind some of their, their learning style, is then, as professionals, we've got information to be able to really tap into. This is a strategy that works well. And yes, we can say it works well in reading, but it's amazing how that reading strategy can transfer to science classroom, to the social studies classroom, to the foreign language classroom. So, it really is helpful, and to me, that's what, what gets me excited, when you start listening to them and hear about all of the different ways in which they're approaching literacy instruction, that's what's good for kids. That's what's going to be best for all of our kids.
And can I say really quickly, regardless of if a kid has, or if a student has a diagnosis or not, I, kind of like with autism, I see it kind of as an umbrella, and yes, the umbrella might say autistic or Asperger's, or any sort of learning disability. To me, that doesn't matter. I just want to know where the holes are so I can help them fix it. So, when I hear dyslexic, that is such a big word right now, and it's kind of that hot topic that everyone's talking about, but really, and I have had students whose parents have said, like, I think my child might be dyslexic, but that doesn't help me at all. That word doesn't help me, or that diagnosis doesn't help me. I want to see, okay, well, where are the holes so we can work on it? Because there's absolutely brain research out there that shows that just because you have this diagnosis, it doesn't mean you can't learn and you can't grow. It means you struggle with certain things and you might need extra time, but there is absolutely growth potential there. And so, we just need to know where the holes are, how we can help, and then move forward with that. So...
And there are so many different cases.
Other questions?
I just have to make a comment. I was one of those kids.
Yeah.
So, my folks got a grip on it, and I went to summer school after first, second, third, fourth, and fifth and sixth grade, and they employed whoever they could to get me caught up, which this program, you're doing right between the school.
Yeah.
And that's why I really wish for it going on. I'm really glad to see it happen because I worked with students for three years and I had the same one in sixth grade. It was like, sorry, this won't be here, I'm there to help you.
Yep.
And I said, let your teacher know. You have to talk to your teacher, and just encourage them to do that. And one thing that we really struggle with, which I'm glad to see, is you will get kids through the program and scheduled, and you know, qualify for special ed, but they need those little services, and technically, for the state, they say, there's nothing for them. But, that's what the title of the RTI program comes in and works with those kids that don't get the services.
So, the way that we assess for special education is we assess where their IQ is and where they are performing with reading, math skills. So, let's say they have 100 IQ. To be able to qualify in special ed, you'd have to score like in the high 70s to show that gap between your, where your IQ is and how you can perform according to that IQ test and where you are performing in reading and math. There has to be a big gap there. So, what Mrs. Schultz is talking about is if your IQ is 80 and you're performing at like a 75, you're within your range of performing, and you might not be, you might not be up to right where target is, but that's where we come in to help.
Any other questions?
Is this required by the state, some form of response to intervention or multi-tiered?
No, it's not. And I think that's the other part that I would just like to stress is, it is really a philosophical approach. And, you know, I've had experiences in the past where families have, you know, called and said, well, I would really not like my child to participate in that RTI stuff. And this is the philosophical belief at Haynesville of how we are going to teach literacy skills. And so, it's, it's more of a philosophy than it is a prescribed curriculum or anything. But to answer your question, no, it is not required.
Personally, I like that you're normalizing it because, yeah, I mean, it's a normal thing to be missing certain parts and need catching up. And I remember, in grade school, we had the sparrows and the eagles, and we all knew from first grade that the sparrows were the dumb kids. You know, they try and make it whatever, but if you just, like you said, if it's fluid with people just catching up in certain things, like waiting for that to click.
And not only that, I would say about 60 to 70% of my day, I am not in my classroom. I am in my students' classrooms, and that's what we call push-in versus pull-out, is when we're pulling out students. So, the majority of my day, I am not even in my classroom. I am in the kindergarten classroom, working with the kindergarten students so that they miss the least amount of time with their... I am in the kindergarten classroom, working with the kindergarten students so that they miss the least amount of time with their teacher and with the rest of their class because that's the goal.
Well, and I've had kids in school seven or eight years and I've never heard them say anything about the dumb kids or anything about intervention or anything. So that, the stigma that's with it, that potentially would be with it, doesn't seem to be as strong as.
Cause we're very early in elementary, there, there's, there's flow in and out of the classroom. And there's only one adult, just the kids.
That's not what it looked like when I went to school. So I'm glad to hear that.
Absolutely. And it has changed so much even, yeah, since we've been in school, I would say too.
Yeah.
Um, absolutely. It is such a different mindset.
I appreciate you bringing them in.
I appreciate it.
One thing too, I bet, is it from a teacher's perspective too, I mean, you know exactly where you're at as well. You know, versus waiting for a one-year test to know how am I performing as a teacher? Like you also know quickly what's working and not working. I bet that's probably a big relief. Like you're not waiting, like, well, how did we do? Absolutely.
Because sometimes a month seems like a really long time.
Would you be for those who self change?
Yes, yes. Sometimes a month seems like a long time. So I cannot imagine if we were only waiting for that MCA test because I'm pretty sure I would drive myself to the bad house.
Yeah, right. And really quickly, can I just say too, we have sixty general ed students who are receiving services in reading and math. Of those sixty-five, I have had one parent email asking for more information. So I gave her more information and she was happy with that. And we've had at least ten, ten, give or take one, um, or two parents reach out and say, so I heard you're doing this with kiddos. Is there any way that my kid can be getting the help too? Because they struggle with this or that. And because we are not restricted to Title I monies at the elementary or at the middle school, I get to say, absolutely, yes. And then they get to come to my room and work with me and it's wonderful. And I haven't heard any kiddos complain either, other than no candy, but.
I tie the Title I funds, so it gets a little hairier in there, but we make it. We make things work.
Yep. Yes.
Yep. So it's, so far, very positive. And in the eight years that I've been doing my job at the elementary school, I have only had one case where parents have said, no. So.
I've had conversations with several parents who, um, were at the good end of the interventions.
Go ahead.
And they had nothing but good to say, but I am so happy you came here and presented. I didn't realize how in-depth everything was and how well you tied, I knew you did tie it together with the, with the secondary school, but I didn't know how well this all worked. This is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really excited to be able to share this with you.
Absolutely.
Nice job.
I should say, sorry, you've been doing this for years.
That's okay. It's good. We're doing this together. It's good.
Can we move on?
Yep.
Okay. So the next item up there is the design team update. There are three, um, resources. Uh, they have the October twenty-fourth notes. Um, I believe that was the CTE meeting. The October twenty-eighth was the full design team meeting. And then also UNESCO's presentation from the October twenty-eighth meeting. Um, I don't know if there's a design team member that kind of just wants to give a summary of where things are at and, and what's next. Maggie, you're kind of the note taker.
I'm just going to quick look at my notes here again.
Okay.
Um, so one thing that I've really appreciated about UNESCO is they've been really open about changes. So there were some changes with the bleachers that are actually going to save us significantly, um, when it comes to dollars. Um, I don't know the cost in front of me, but it's a big reduction. Um, let's see. Going through all my notes, I take.
Three hundred dollars to sixty dollars a seat.
Right. I mean, that's a pretty significant savings. Um, we continue to just have conversations about, about space with community ed, the fitness center. And I think we're at a place where everybody's pretty solid and won't make sense for the flow, um, for the CTE and auto shop. Um, at that point, we were still waiting, um, for full list of equipment and fixture layouts. Um, what the, part of the conversations were on the map, it looks like here's where certain things are going to go. But that's more for where does power need to go, not necessarily that that space is just going to be dedicated to one area. Um, the vision has really been how do we collaborate with different spaces, so different content, you know, teachers or different, um, classes are moving within this space. Uh, but if you look at some of the plans, it looks like, oh, is that just for this? And it's really not. It's basically just so that they know where to put power in. Um, so that was a clarifying, um, point. We spent some time looking at the exterior options, which I thought was really fun. Um, we all agreed, it was really, really well-presented and we all, I don't think anyone disagreed with the option we landed on. It's not completely defined yet, but, um, they had a pretty good outlook or design of what it would look like. Um, there'll be some glass on the front. There's going to be a canopy. It will look really nice, um, but not like audacious by any means, but it's very, very nice. Um, there'll be some green accents that will incorporate through some of the, um, door spaces, which are entrances, um, throughout the building, just to bring, kind of pull things together. Um, so some of the changes were initially, we were thinking fifteen hundred seating and, um, the fieldhouse now we're down to twelve hundred. Um, the group fitness is now eight hundred square feet. The cardio was five, is five hundred and concession is two hundred eighty. Um, initially, they were, I think, presenting five hundred for the concession. Is that, and we said, we don't really need that space. Let's put that, let's put that square footage into other space. Um, fi- again, some final things coming yet from, um, the CTE teachers and administration. They were having some conversations. Um, and then we set our next meetings. Um, but we did talk about the paint booth, um, so a change in that. In talking with, and not me talking, but I think with administrators or UNESCO, with other schools that have put in like full paint booths, they've really regretted it. It's really costly. I think there's, um, like issues with the air. I mean, you could probably speak more to it, but they're like, we don't need that big of a space. It's really expensive to operate. And so we all agreed to reducing that space. We don't need a space where you're bringing in a full vehicle. There are local, um, like dealerships that are actually going away with it for the same reasons, for like, why would we have that? And so we'll still have the paint space so you can bring in smaller pieces, um, but we won't have the full space that we originally were talking about. So that, things continue to evolve and I think that's important to know is like, this is my first time going through a project like this. And as your plans get finalized, you realize, okay, this is going to cost more. You're making adjustments throughout the whole thing, which has been kind of fun. Um, cause I like that because you're making decisions on base to what's best for what, what you know right now and the space and needs. And things are kind of continuing to evolve, but it hasn't been, it's been like, yes, that makes sense. Okay, yep. So we're going to look at the slope. We're going to have to, you know, are we going to add fill-in? Um, how expensive is that going to be? Well, that means we'll add steps. I mean, so things like that are continuing to change and expect well. But overall, I think it's been, I don't know, really good and positive. Is there anything I?
Thomas, you got that?
Just, yeah, you summed it up pretty well. I think Maggie said, looking at some of the exterior design features is going to need the, need go around this last meeting. Um, and yeah, just finishing up some of the interior, um, flows has been, been pretty fun.
UNESCO shows up and they have four or five people every single meeting. And one talks, sometimes one talks a little bit, the rest of them are all taking notes. And when we get to the done with the meetings, then they go back to make sure they have clarity on everything we talked about. Cause you know how when you get in a big discussion, you kind of stop and move on to this other topic. This, they just kind of head us back there. So they get a pretty complete, um, uh, account of what we were talking about. But I think the last time they went back and double-checked four or five items that we kind of, just in the flow of conversation, we just kind of flowed away from it and then they would back us up. So it's been real impressive there. They're kind of, my impression is they're kind of watching the dollars on the backside because we ask about specific costs somewhere and I don't think we're to that point yet. But, um, on the bleachers, they came up with a better idea, more cost-effective, and it made perfect sense. So it's, it's been a pretty decent group to work with.
I know the one question that I am, am starting to get is that people are wanting to see a rendering of what this is going to look like. And I think we're getting really close to that. Um, I do believe so. The next meeting on November twenty-first is the next CTE design meeting, where we'll just focus on the career tech, um, portion of the project. And then on November twenty-fifth is when the full design team would meet. And I would think sometime shortly after that, November twenty-fifth, I do believe we will probably have some sort of, some rendering or images of, of kind of where things are. And, um, as soon as we have that, that is something that we will get out and, and get the newspaper involved and get stuff on our website and, and be able to start communicating, communicating that. Excuse me.
Yeah, we know very well, they're working a long time in the background. Cause when they show up to meetings, we have all but different stuff to look at. So it's not like we're beelining down one direction by any means.
Uh, one question I have, it looks like you've been dealing a lot with the building. At what point would we begin to see some ideas of what parking and the flow is going to be? As far as I see the, you know, the basic buildings there, but what the flow is going to be like as far as drop-offs and.
So I, I just know a little bit, um, I have been involved in some emails with the city. So the, the, um, and the engineers and architects from UNESCO have been working with the city to actually come up, um, and agree upon exactly the, um, amount of water being displaced. And what that will entail as far as how much of a, um, whether it be a, a holding pond or if it's going to be an underground system, um, all of that, I know this was, oh, going on two weeks ago now. Um, they were looking for, uh, full numbers as far as student numbers in each grade that are residing in this building so they could get a better sense of population on a given school day and all of that. Um, so I'm guessing that in my understanding of the next design meeting was really going to be about airing out like some flooring surface, uh, in the community center and some other of those, uh, colors and, and, um, appearance questions. But then, yeah, I believe that, that next piece then is, you know, how is this parking lot going to be laid out? And, and what does it mean for, um, site water retention and all of that?
I'm just, I'm, I'm concerned. I just want to make sure about drop-off, you know.
So we did have a conversation, we did have a conversation.
Elderly have to walk way more than what they already have to walk.
So we did have a conversation about one of the things that the group did talk about when, um, they were presenting these, these, uh, options was on that west entrance that I guess I kind of envisioned even for a school day, that that really is going to be the focal entrance of this building when the addition is done. That that west entrance would have a drive-up space where you could get close to that entrance and be able to drop off and then go park a vehicle. Um, so they are working with that premise. Um, now, what it actually looks like, we've not seen anything that they brought back. But I know there was a little conversation about that at one of our, our meetings.
And I think they're well aware of that concern. I mean, we have all these great things. Just getting in the building here in the distance, you have to walk to get to where you want to, is still a fair distance and getting them close to the building. And Maggie, I think you, I heard you bring it up to a couple of different times, just when all of us have been there. So it just appears that versus on these others, and we haven't really got to that one yet. For our design. Okay. Any other questions on? Okay. Should we move on to the next one?
Yep.
Indoor air quality.
Um, so the, the facility committee met, um, help me out here, a week ago, week and a half ago.
Week and a half, I think.
Or so, um, had an initial meeting, uh, talked, uh, kind of about where we've been, the discussion up to this point. Um, and then really kind of focused on the conversation about, um, scope moving forward and potentially what that scope would look like. Um, the decision was made to move our next facility committee to November eighteenth, which was a week from yesterday. Um, and that'll be at six o'clock. Uh, UNESCO is going to bring to that meeting a detailed list of equipment and exactly what they would be recommending as far as, um, what equipment would go in the building and how that would function. Um, I know there have been some questions about, uh, vertical ventilators versus horizontal ventilators. And they're going to be able to address those type of questions as well. Um, so that's really what's next with that. It's, um, that facility committee will meet again on November eighteenth. And then we would have an update after that. We don't know if Cheryl or, or Thomas or Jake, if you have anything to add.
It's just been really helpful, UNESCO. I mean, these people are genius. And unlike, I mean, they're trying to draw a plan for, it looked like playing a game of Scriv-o. And we couldn't quite decipher what he was drawing, if you'll remember that. But their expertise is just amazing and they're good listeners and they're able to walk us through this for those of us who have no understanding of mechanical engineering whatsoever. Made me feel not quite so dumb as I felt before, which, you know, is good. But, um, walking us through these processes and these steps, I, I can't say enough good things about their expertise in this area. And I think they're really doing us a great service in all that they've done for us.
So then, go ahead, Cheryl.
I, I think mostly we just, it was an initial meeting and we had a lot of questions. And they'll be coming back with answers. Um, so it was, it was a good initial meeting and.
Correct.
We, we had a lot to discuss, a lot to go into.
And much more to go into from here.
Yes.
And then the other, the other piece to the meeting on the eighteenth is I do believe there will be, um, a representative from Lers who will also be out at that meeting to be able to talk about, um, the, the finance, um, side of, of a potential project as well. So that's, um, kind of where we're at. We'll know more after the eighteenth of November.
So there's some questions out there. Um, so, and I brought it up at a, a previous meeting where we talked about what was supposed to be included in the sixteen million as compared to an extra three point two on it. So there's this analysis that we've made internally on how handle that. Um, there's a group of the public that are not really too interested in that. Cause technically at the end of the day, if it stays at three two point two million dollars, this board is going to authorize a three point two million dollar addition on their own because we can. And the system's all set for that, um, without asking the public. And the public's not necessarily interpreting their tax impact to be the same like the first brochure we had, as much as what the total dollar was. Um, people have said different things from, uh, buying a vehicle. Um, people always want to know what the price of vehicle is, but the payment could be a deciding factor. We have just seen, uh, switch to their payment was going to be same as originally projected. Um, I'm not sure the public's buying into that. I don't know, um, specifically if anybody else is hearing it. But the issue that we've come across is this board has to authorize it. Now, I hate to combine two things together, um, if you don't mind. But I also sit at the design meeting while we're throwing a whole bunch of stuff on this building, like flat steel, a flat roof design, all that. But there's no pricing. We're not getting any pricing on that. But if in essence, we were supposed to have some of this project in there, like it said on the brochure, gee, we maybe need to be aware of what the sentiment of the public is. Um, public, I don't believe, the, a fair amount of people I'm talking to, um, are all saying, listen, we authorized that. We are fun and game for all this. I see what the brochure said. When I go to the survey, we as public got, the biggest communication item people wanted was by mail. The only thing we mailed to them was a survey and our proposal. And then I think we had to mail out the ballot. And then we have a, had another thing that kind of went, but that's what the public wanted. In the brochure, like I had mentioned, it said, we are going to take care of some of this indoor air quality. Does that mean that we have to kind of look at this whole picture? It's a whole different thing. You have two entities going on at one time. You have two entities going on at one time, one where the board is not going to authorize it, but are we as a design committee, should we be potentially a little more conservative about what we're looking at here and see what effectively works for the education of the kids, maybe not be so worried about how fancy it looks on the outside? Flat steel compared to corrugated steel? If we, if we adjusted, I asked and they said it was cheaper to buy it the same all the way around. But we don't have all of that. But if we are going to move forward, just heading down the direction of authorizing a bond because we're able to as compared to saying, okay, design group, you guys need to be kind of looking at this. If you can work some air quality into this 16 million dollars, you better be looking at it. I'm just throwing it out there, that's, that's what's going on from my perspective.
I have two concerns. One is, and it sounds like maybe we're going in that direction, but I want to make sure that whatever proposal is made for air quality, that we have some choices, that we don't just say, it seemed like at the beginning, we were told, this is what we can do and this is what it's going to cost. And I didn't see, well, here's A and B. So I would like to hopefully that the committee will be looking at what are some of, what are other options? Are there ways we can do this for less money or are we just buying into the program?
But the options we were looking at, we talked about this at the meeting, we're not going to go for the fanciest, remember that discussion?
Yeah, but I would agree the same sentiment. Like the cost is a big issue to me, yet I'm still kind of hung up on this cost, which is why I asked Matt, you know, in the meeting, I wanted to see not only the unit and what we're looking at and what we're talking about, but what's it cost? I mean, 3.2 million dollars is not just individual air unit handling, we have electrical costs involved, we've got, we've got a lot of costs. If I'm quoting L H VAC work for a new building, I'm going to get costs on different breakdowns of what a lot of those things are going to cost me. So I want to see that full cost, I want to understand it. And as Bruce said, you know, the sticker shock of the 3.2 million dollars was high right away, that initial meeting, we had that conversation, and that was my big hang up, my big holdup. I think we need to take care of this and I'm not opposed to what UNESCO is proposing right now, but I also have no other options to go against, I have no other prices to go against, I have no other concept of what I'm actually looking at. I'm just got a dollar and an idea, and that's all I'm looking at. So I need more than a dollar and an idea to say yes.
I have a couple of follow up questions to that. So I'm curious as to how is that different than the, what we're going to do for the facility? Like do we, you know what I mean? Like part of that is like you, like we look back when UNESCO first was communicating with us, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think like they said, this project will cost around 30, 37 million dollars based off of like all the needs of what the community said they wanted, what they went through and they took inventory of all the different systems we have and they ranked them. Remember there was like red, high alert, they had different color coded, and they said this is what the project's going to cost. And then we had conversations, and I did look back at my notes, like in April, we did talk about, there would be different funding options for this. So whatever the project was, we would have to look at different funding options. So what the community, this is how I recall it, is that what the community, we'd say, what would they go for? That's what we sent the survey, what, what would their tax basically threshold be? And the community said 16 million, and there was actually a big percentage that said more than that, and so we said, but we're going to trust that 16 million is what the majority of people said, knowing there would be projects that would have to be addressed elsewhere and we would have to come up with the different funding projects. That's why Ellers and stuff gave us that information to talk about back in April on how to utilize LTFM dollars, like different funding options that were available. So I guess that's where I don't, and again, it's all new information, like I'm new to a project, so we're all internalizing it, but we did talk about this, this was part of the conversation.
All of it was, there was conversation on all of it, but there was lots of conversation all spring. And there was conversation that we were going to grow into a 32 million dollar project and all of that, but the board, which I thank everybody for, we decided we were going to go to the public and do a survey. In that survey, the public did have a choice of a 28 million dollar project, would have looked a little bit different, had a choice of another, would have looked a little bit different. But what the public had was they came back and that average, and we heard, we all heard the people from the survey company was 16 million. Okay, our brochure came out and it said what we were going to address right in the brochure. So we had stuff previous, same as we're getting it after the fact, we had stuff that we said we were going to address, air quality was one of them. And like the building, we didn't spend money in advance, so I know for public, if you're wondering why we're trying to figure out the building right now, that's because this board did not want to spend one dime until the public said yay. So I know that has come up here, so we're after the fact, but we moved back to fall. Then we came out with the brochure, lots of it was there. Now, things that I've heard, yep, it was announced at all the meetings that people came to. Well, maybe it was. I talked to some people that were at some of those meetings, very concerned about same issue, they never heard anything about it. So they took that brochure, they decided on the value. What I am very certain of, and we all got copies of it, when it came up, we were trying to use the difference in what our estimated tax was going to be now that the interest rate fell, similar to going and buying a car. And somebody told me, you go buy the car, you arrange it at 4.3% interest on this payment, but then when you're ready to buy the car, they got a better deal on interest rates, so they're going to up the price, but you're going to pay the same amount of money. You know, there was some logic to what just general people were associating with that, and it was in the brochure. So what did that actually mean? It was in the same paragraph as us redoing the CTE area. Okay, so it didn't look like we were setting out, now the boilers were addressed down below, and I saw that, but we all got the whole summary, that's exactly what I recall. If we were going to do that big monster project, it was a 32 million dollar project, real similar. But the community also has been through a time where a board has authorized a big bond without the public voting on it. And truly, if we're so confident, doesn't mean you can't have the public vote on this Public can still vote on it, it just because we have the authorization doesn't mean we don't have to ask them.
So is your recommendation then that the district, every time we'd want to utilize LTFM dollars, that we would go to vote?
It's more than just, I guess more than just the LTFM dollars that we're talking, that's, that up to 50 dollars is a fraction of, you know, a percentage of this 3.2 million dollars.
Right. I've had a lot of community members calling me and emailing me and talking to me in public, and they're all saying the same thing that you're saying, that I'm saying, that is, we went from the 19 million down to the 16, and I thought that was because we were making more conservative choices in the fieldhouse and everything. I didn't realize that was just dropping out 3 million for the air quality stuff that we can pass. It feels like that was something put in the back pocket, like magic ticket, and it feels tricky to everybody to say, we're not going to address that with the 16, which is really what was top on the list to people. So many people are like, I don't care about a fieldhouse. I just was interested in the boiler stuff that we've needed to address for years and years, the air quality stuff, the CTE stuff, which is, you know, and I'm, I'm not talking vested interest for me because I've got, my, my kids will be out of the elementary by the time this gets resolved. And my boys are in basketball and they're practicing till late 30 at night right now. I'm interested in having a fieldhouse and basketball, but I'm listening to what people are saying, and I'm agreeing with them in that this is 3.2 million dollars, and if we sit there and say, well, we're not going to address it with the 16 million because we don't have to, because we have an alternative, you're not going to get operational levy later because you've lost all trust with the public. And whether or not it was communicated or communicated well, I didn't know it was going to be 3.2 million, and apparently other people didn't, and you, you can't gaslight a whole town. You can't tell them, oh, we, we said it, you guys should have known, when everybody's saying, if you said it, I missed it. If you said this was not, this was not going to be addressed in the 16 million that I'm voting for, I mean, a lot of people are saying, if I knew I had a choice, I would have voted for the 3.2 to get that done and not done the other stuff, if that's what we're going to do. You can't just say the ends justifies the means that because it won't cost them anymore out of pocket, then it's okay.
I think a lot of it for me comes down to perception. I have no problem with any of this, but it's the perception that the community's going to take.
Exactly.
We're on a high right now, I mean, things are going so well here, and I hate to see us march ahead with a project that might cause some issues down the line. I think this will cause issues down the line. I don't see any reason, I mean, we need to go ahead with this project, the building project needs to go ahead full steam. The other one, does it hap, it seems like at the beginning, it was like, well, we have to tie the two together to save money or something, I think, well, I think we need to pull back on the one.
Well, I was told this had to happen, and it was going to happen anyway. I didn't realize that meant we were just going to put a health and safety bond through despite what anybody else said at 3.2 million. I thought that meant we were going to really have to tighten belts and look at LTFM funds and whatever, because I would have said right away, I'm not voting for a health and safety bond necessarily without knowing the public's view on this. If they would have known, and I, as a member of the public, if I would have known and they would have understood that that was the deal, I don't know that it would have gone the same way. And like I said, like, like Rick said, I think it's a violation of trust because I, if, if this many people are coming up and saying, this is not how I understood it was going to be used, and then we go ahead anyway and ignore that, that's not right. You know, I want the air quality stuff, but I want the fieldhouse stuff too. I'm just saying, here's what I'm hearing, and that's where my thinking was at too. And I should know as much as the general public, if not more, obviously, but.
So I'm curious, what would be the, what's then the recommendation that?
My recommendation is to continue looking at the project within the facility committee, and we, we work towards the best solution possible that we can bring to the board and have a overall grants on what we need to do for the future.
We're exploring options.
Yep.
Both cost wise and what is truly necessary at this moment, and what could be put up for a later date? Because I agree that we really are trying to gaslight the community with putting through a bond issue without their vote.
But we were elected, we cannot abdicate our responsibility. We have election certificates, this is our job to mining.
I didn't run against anybody the last time around, and I don't think there's anybody sitting here that ever ran against somebody.
No.
So I don't, I don't think that I can exercise some great ability because I didn't, I didn't run it, first time around, Cheryl and I had to run against somebody. They don't have any choice, they're, they're accepting us as volunteers. I don't know that that puts me in a position that I'd say.
That's what I wasn't elected to do is represent the public, that's what I'm saying, is this is what the public is telling me.
And that's what I'm saying, we need to do our, I hadn't finished yet.
Yeah.
We need to do our due diligence, but at the same time, we are elected to make decisions and not have to go to the voters for everything, but I think it's important for us to be fiscally conservative about this. We need to do our research, we needed to continue to do this, but at the same time, we do have that option where we don't have to go to the taxpayers for every single dollar that we spend, but I'm not sure I'm comfortable with this 3.2 million dollar taxpayer. I'm just wanting to make clear that we don't always have to go to the taxpayers for every single penny that we spend, and this is one of these situations, but I think it's appropriate that we do our research on this so that we can make our taxpayers a little bit more comfortable with this. And if we can put something off till later, I think that's okay, but just remember, we have our own responsibility too.
And, and also, I just want to be careful, like we're, we're saying what the public is thinking, and we're going, it's not data, the 50, 20 people.
There is data though.
But it's not data when, when we're saying the public, the people who've talked to us, that's representative of our whole public. I mean, typically, people, like, most people don't want to pay taxes, right?
But we can go back to the survey and see what the data is and where their priorities are.
Right.
So I can back up the fact with data that their priorities are in the air quality and the CTE space as well as the fieldhouse.
Right.
We can't just say, let's just do the fieldhouse, and then we'll look and see if we have any leftover for that other stuff that you voted on. Because that's us deciding, and we have vested interest. We've got, I mean, administration, I've got friends that are going to have better space to do their jobs in, I've got kids that'll have better space to practice, and I've got vested interest in certain parts, you know, so I don't think it's fair for us to say, we were elected to do whatever we think is best and make those decisions. Our job is to listen to the public and to go to the public and say, yeah, that's why we asked them in the first place. What is the interest? I mean, we have a very, very small community relatively, and they said, yeah, we support you to the tune of 16 million dollars, that's huge. And it's, it's for us to take it over and say, okay, well, we know best, best now without data, I'm going back to the data that we actually have, and to the data that I'm getting from the public right now. You know, we took out the, we took out the people with the vested interest in the survey for a reason, you know, and that's what UNESCO said too. You take that out for a reason, because they're always going to push a certain way because they have interest in it, you know? How about the rest of, you know, Joe Blow taxpayer, you know? I, I pay commercial property taxes. I've got a vested interest, so, you know, I'm always voting yes on things, but if I've just got my business out here and I'm like, wait a second, you know, there's, there's a lot more people out there that have, that are paying commercial property taxes or paying agricultural or paying, you know, that don't have vested interest, and they have, they have a voice. I'm losing my voice, but.
Well, and there's somewhat to do with accessibility for the public. Okay, so if you're computer literate, pretty well, you can get the email started off to everybody. If I wanted to call another board member or even get in touch with them, that's the only contact we have for those that are computer literate.
Yeah, actually, I got several phone calls from people that said they are only calling me because they know that I own a business, and they called my business number, my office number, and they didn't know how to get ahold of anybody else.
That's exactly why they're calling me. And Rick, you're pretty accessible, but nothing wrong with somebody that's not accessible. Everybody's got their busy life, you have to do that, but it's not like a one sided affair because we do have a difference in accessibility of people where they can find us. And I, and I'm getting the same thing?
I'm getting a lot of phone calls too.
But, and you're in, direct in the phone book, so am I in the phone book. So there's some to accessibility. I'm just saying that I, I think this, we need to be very careful here, but there, as Ashley says, there's that part of it saying, okay, so if we said it was going to be in there, what part of that budget is for that? So when I look at the design where we are talking about flat steel, beautiful brick around the arena or the, the sports center, well, what if it was steel and had concrete on the bottom? Lots of them are built that way, right? Does it need to have a flat roof design with an angled roof behind? What is that? And we've asked, or I asked, UNESCO's trying to get us to coalesce behind something and it's difficult for them, but if there's a cost to that, and that extra cost equates to something that we can accomplish that we said we were going to do, maybe we should be a little looking at that, because the school has always said, we're doing this for the kids. Not sure the kids are all hung up on exactly what it looks like on the inside, I think they may be hung up on playing their sports, doing their activities, and all of that. I don't happen to think steel buildings look that bad. But I, I think that's the issue here. We go ahead and we do that, we basically are going to end up potentially look at something down the road. But we also have the part that probably come from your committee, we have a bunch of kids in the school this year, right? What are we going to do there? Are we going to open up the classroom doors in the middle of the day? What are we, what are we going to do? We can't just slide through a year if there's. We can't just slide through a year if there's issues, and I don't know what it takes. I believe our fans bringing the fresh air shut off when it no longer calls for heat. They need to be running more. Well, how, how do you accomplish that? We may not be able to with the system that we have, but if you're looking at, um, CO2 levels getting a little higher, the CO2 levels in here could be interesting, because we have lots of people in here, and it was probably more when we're at the end of the meeting than we were at the beginning of the meeting. Kids have the same thing. On the studies that I saw, they were talking about many times between 10 o'clock and 3. Well, the kids are in there for a period of time, if those unit ventilators are turning off because they don't need heat, the kids are generating heat at the same time, and the fans aren't running, they don't have, the fresh air isn't blowing in, huh?
They never turn off.
The fans are running all the time.
It's either heating or ventilation. Well, heat's and ventilation's the same time, but the heat will knock off if it's too warm in the room, which you're always going to get fresh air.
So all the ventilator heaters will run all the time?
Yeah. Which is weird as well, which I've seen.
But with one of these units that we're looking at right now, it's controlled, centrally controlled as well, right? I mean, it's not as classroom controlled, and you can override that, or...
With all the new...
With the new...
Digital controls.
Electronic controls and stuff you can pretty well, you gotta get from the computer. Teacher could call and say, I need 2 degrees, no problem. I've got 2 over there that are hooked that way already, which is really nice, but they're newer units also.
So then the classrooms will not have individual controls in them?
They still will, because they have radiation on walls.
The individual unit in the classroom will then talk to the, the central system and call for fresh air if the CO2 sensor is...
But the temperature can be trolled by the time of day, and the CO2 level is controlled 24/7.
Correct.
Which is, which is different than what we have right now as well, is now there's a monitor that monitors that CO2 level, so it can ensure that that level stays where it should be all day. So when there's no students in the school, they may not need to run as much. It has availability to run, but doesn't run as much. And once again, this is part of this whole system, I mean, I can understand the HVAC world a little bit more than, than probably most on the board. This is kind of one of the things that we're looking at, and that's what I'm saying, it's not, I'm not saying it's not worth the value that they're putting towards, but I don't see the numbers. I, I want to see the numbers, I want to see the units, and that's part of, as myself, as part of the facility, you know, looking at this equipment, I want to see that, I want to understand it, I want to, I want to know, then I want to see other options. I, I think it's our due diligence to understand that, but I also, $3.2 million, I, I agree, Bruce, is, you know, is there, is there $500,000 that we can shave off of the way that the exterior of the building looks to put it back towards the, you know, to the equipment that we need, or, you know, what, what options do we have?
I appreciate that the committee that you are asking UNESCO those questions and looking for different options, I 100% agree with that. I think where, where I get uncomfortable is when we're saying, like, in my, like, heart of hearts, I don't think we intended to gaslight anyone. I mean, I look at my notes, and we talked about these things, I think Matt has been nothing but transparent, he's been at community meetings, he has, like, said in the press, like, come talk to me, ask questions, and so I want to be careful, like, I, I don't think that, that has been the intention at all, and, and that's fine, other people can feel that the intention was maybe different, or that it was a trick, I don't believe at all. I've had these conversations, when I had questions, I asked Matt, I've spent many 45-minute conversations with him, with follow-up piece available 100% of the time, so I just think that's important to say, this is, this has been a conversation ongoing, and options have been presented in front of us the entire time. But I guess, like, part of it is, when I was first interested in the school board, like, I said, one of the hard parts about a district is, you don't have a marketing team. There is no one dedicated in our school district to be a marketing team. Their main priority is to educate our students, to keep these facilities running, that it's safe, that we are providing this environment, and that has always been, for any districts, except some districts do have marketing teams. We don't, and it's been a challenge, and that has been a concern, how do we get the information out in front? That's why Matt has been in the paper and been available, and it sounds like to some people, we fell short, and I acknowledge that, if, if they read the one brochure and that's it, how that was interpreted, but I think that's just a challenge, it's an ongoing conversation, but I am not comfortable at all saying that people are being, like, that this is an intentional deception. I have not felt that way at all. I think it's an ongoing conversation, and I appreciate that this board is willing to ask these questions and, like, be in conversation and challenge each other. I think that is super important, but I think we're keeping it at a level, let's ask the questions, we're trying to get to the right product, and I think it's an important discussion too, or not even discussion, but when, you know, are we here to represent? Yes, we're here representing the public, but my job is, I'm here to represent the school. I'm here to represent the school and make sure, like, as we are making decisions, that we are doing the best things for these students. Our students don't have a voice at the table, they can't vote. And so, and that's just difference of maybe how we're looking at what our kind of ownership in this is, and I think that's okay, that we're different in that, but I do appreciate and continue to ask those questions, but I just want to be in record, I, I don't think there's any intentionality at all.
I agree.
Based off of...
I, I don't think there's any intention. I heard it enough times, I think, once again, it's just, if we came back and said, well, the leftover of this is going to cost us $500,000, we'd have a different conversation today than we're having right now at 3.2. So I think that's a sticker shock to me, the, the dollar was the big shock to me. Yes, you know, I've heard it numerous times, but that's, that's where we have to sit back and figure out where we're at and what we've got to do in the future.
I agree, I don't think it was intentional. It just was a misconception, but the same thing, the sticker shock. $3.2 million was a big hit, or is a big hit, if we decide on it. At the end of the day though, we still, even after all of our research, we still have to come to the decision, are we going to, if we're going to fund it, how much we're going to fund it, how we're going to do it. So, right now, we're still in the research mode.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, there's opportunities, I didn't, I mean, do people even know what LTFM dollars mean? Do they know that that's already money, that's already, the taxpayer's already paid for? And the reason why some of these funds, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but, you know, I started reading more on LTFM dollars, and why they changed some of the rules was because there's not equity within school funding. And so what happens is, you have districts who are, don't want to pay, I mean, nobody wants to pay taxes, let's be real, right? But if there's a district that is absolutely not going to pass anything, that is empowering school boards and schools to make decisions, because the money has already been taxed, the schools have set aside for these projects, so that schools don't have to say, oh my gosh, we can't fix our roof because we can't pass a bond for it. And so, some of these things are set up for these, for these purposes. You know, we can't do a new addition with LTFM dollars, it's set aside for things like air quality. And so I just think, again, I wouldn't expect anyone to know that, I had to do my own reading, um, and those are, again, opportunities where I don't think our general public probably knows these things or understands, they hear the word bond, and they think, tax, this is already money, that's, you know what I mean?
That's what I was trying to say, exactly.
Is there, it's just a lot of information, and, so I, I understand how there could be confusion, because I guess I would acknowledge, and, and yes, there's ways that we can continue to educate, but at the end of the day, we've got to make some decisions, and some people are going to be mad regardless of what we do, if we say yes or no, we're going to have people upset on either side, guaranteed. So we have to say what, with the knowledge we have, with the experts at the table, with our leadership in place, as we go through the decisions, as we discern, who do, like, what do we want to do? And those are tough decisions, and, and it's going to cause, yeah, disagreements and...
And I have no problem with any of that, and, 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 you know, and I don't think we try to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. My only concern is, I think part of the perception is that we were ramming this through very quickly, like, we were going to vote on this at the next meeting, and boom, you know? Well, at one point, I think we were talking about, no, but we wanted this to be tied in with the rest, and I just don't want, that's the perception I don't want to get out there, that, that we are not taking our time to make sure. And as far as educating the public, they may need to be educated, but that takes some time.
It does.
You can't just do it and then come back later and say, oh, this is what we meant.
Even just all the acronyms are, I mean, it's, it's a lot to navigate, and I understand that.
So boards previous years, when the governor came and the legislature came and authorized the LTFM, we had just been through, um, the bond to fix roofs and stuff, and at that time, um, we did raise their taxes. It was nominal, we were taking it in in small increments at a time, but the state was saying exactly what you're talking about, you need to start on this fund. But what I've also noticed on the LTFM is, is that fund big now or growing? Have we used it? Um, because we were supposed to have that for replacement, health and safety, health and safety is a little bit different, because if the fire marshal tells Donnie, we just do it, right? And so there's things like that that can fall into that, that's kind of a, a separate issue. The LTFM was supposed to be setting it aside for those future needs, and in the original proposal, we were dedicating a bunch of that money to here. Well, someday we're going to need roofs, does that mean now that we go back and have to auth- have the public authorize roofs again, then maybe we should save for it? But at that time, we, we did do that.
Beginning this year, we had a $363,000 fund balance in LTFM. We will end the year, if all the spending goes through that has been authorized, we'll end with a $376,000 fund balance in LTFM. So, historically, the district has not spent all of its LTFM dollars.
Okay.
It's ranged as, as low as spending about $77,000 in the last, I think this is year five of LTFM, so the previous four years ranged as low as, um, $77,000 in spending and as high as, I think, $410,000 in spending. So yes, there is a fund balance in LTFM. We take in about $385,000 annually, as our enrollment ticks up, that number will, will continue to tick up as well, because it's funded on a per pupil basis, so...
Well, I know that when we did the bond, we had roofs that didn't quite need replacing them. So, Donnie, how many years did we run that bond, over four years or something? Well, then we fixed the roofs over a period of time.
We fixed roofs every year.
But we were replacing roofs, and I thought that bond, we extended it out for three, four years when we ran that last bond.
Yeah, it just expired just recently.
Okay, but, and that was kind of planned, it's kind of the same thing, is when we go through wherever that's going to come from and start looking at roofs again to find out when this is going to start to use itself up.
Given the roofs that are on these buildings, you are never going to stop roofing these buildings.
No, it'll never stop.
You're just going to have a track, and you're just going to continue to go around in a cycle, so, um, yeah, if there's $80,000 available for roofing in the summer, we will spend $80,000 of roofing in the summer. If there's $200,000, we would spend $200,000. And unless the district at some point wanted to go to the community and say, we want to put on a 45-year roof and not have the annual, um, re-roofing expense, that would be an option, that you could go and, and do something like that, and that would be a, an alternative to, to what we have. But the roofs that are currently on these buildings, we will continue each summer to have to go and, and set aside dollars to be able to keep, um, refreshing and retaining those roofs, that's not going to go away.
And that's when the LTFM dollars came up, and we decided to go aboard with that, that the state had authorized, to set it up for those savings. Well, it's conversation we need to have, this is not a decision-making thing, it's a conversation meeting, um, where we just discuss some of this stuff, but, um, I think the important part here is, when people contact me, I always tell them, there's seven of us, plus two. Um, but there, there's seven of us, so everybody needs to be up to snuff as best as possible, and when we set up these discussion meetings, that's what I like about them. We have to have a time, if we're making rational and good decisions, that we have opportunity. So I think, um, again, we have no decisions we can make this evening, but if anybody got anything else they want to add?
I just appreciate, I think we need to continue to say both, like, I hope everybody feels empowered to speak up, because you're never going to have the best product unless you're seeing both perspectives all the way through, and so I appreciate everybody saying where they're at, that hopefully at the end, we have the best product, because we have done our due diligence to go through the whole process, and so, yeah.
Okay, if we're set there, then let's move to the next item. Are we ready?
Yep, so strategic planning. Um, I'm, I'm hoping here, once we have the facility design done, that we could move into, um, that strategic planning piece. Part of me is wondering, um, maybe that there would be a natural first step of strategic planning, and that would maybe be working with MSBA to come out and actually have the board do a self-evaluation. Um, I think that, and just listening to this conversation here tonight, I think that encapsulates a, a, a good place to start, um, in order for the board to be in a place where, where I think there could be some strategic planning steps taken. Um, do, do any board members, are you familiar at all, has the board ever done?
They came out last time. MSBA was on here last time, and so we're familiar with them, Rick, I think, was it before yours?
Before my time.
Yeah, we had them out, and, um, they kind of helped us put it together.
So did they come out to do the, the strategic planning piece, or did they come out to do the board evaluation?
No, strategic planning, but I'm getting to work with those folks, they're, they always seem pretty helpful.
Okay, so let me, uh, contact them, and I, I don't, I have never gone through their board self-evaluation process, I've, I've heard about it, and, um, the previous district, we were going to go through that, and then I, um, came here, and so I don't know if they, they went through the process or not, um, but let me reach out to MSBA, and I'll bring some of our information for the business meeting in a couple of weeks.
Okay, so then, the last one we have, um, a few minutes, if anybody's got any topic we haven't discussed that maybe we should bring up at another meeting.
Um, just a thing, I'm on the MSBA legislative delegates, and we'll be meeting on the 6th and 7th of December for, uh, to kind of propose legislation that the MSBA will bring over to, uh, legislature, so if you guys have any suggestions or any ideas for me, absolutely, please feel free to give me some of your concerns or anything you'd like, and I'll certainly bring them forward to the delegate assembly.
Send us some money.
That would be nice. You don't have to worry about this.
We put on the list, uh, permanent funding of safe schoolgoers.
Absolutely, sure.
Matt, I'm going to ask you kind of along with this, going back to what Jacob, you just talked about, um, and, um, the presenters earlier, I talked about this testing that we do every year, and the results don't show up, or didn't used to show up till after Steve Baer for some political reason, had all the results, but all of our administration has to plan for something coming from some test that they don't know what the results were, they don't know what it is, and so you're planning it. It's kind of like trying to plan for two years down the road from each one of those. So, is that a meeting where we could encourage the state legislature, because I think we do it all online now, don't we? Their analysis should be instant.
We do very little planning based on the MCA's. We do our, the further out you get from the data, the less effective it is.
So it doesn't make any difference, is that what you're saying?
We spoke about today, that's how we plan our instruction, we don't use MCA data.
Okay.
Quite honestly, quite honestly, there's a lot of people in St. Paul that love MCA data, and let's just let them love it. They can be really happy with it, they can be really excited about it, and, and we can actually use real data where we can impact kids.
That's why I wanted to include you in that discussion.
Let's just let them love our data.
That's the thing, we need to get to the legislature, because they, they handcuff us really badly, um, with some of this stuff.
One thing I think would be interesting, uh, because I've just spent spending more time reading on funding, which is, it's actually very interesting, I don't hope there would be training opportunity where you or someone could come and, like, literally teach us more on how funding happens, because I think, you know, you see your budget, that's standardized, everybody has the same, every district has the same budget, we see the dollars in it, we understand the categories, but are there, can we deepen our knowledge so that we can better articulate when people ask questions, like, what is this used for, how can we use this, so that we know, like, oh, we could utilize this fund for this, and not, I just, I mean, there was, like, I think it's the House of Representatives put out that document, it's like a 174-page document on funding, it's actually really fascinating, it really is. It really is. I read that and another one, because it's like, because it is so, everything is different, and, and percentages change, and, and based off your average daily, I mean, there's, there's a lot of information, but I think the more that we are empowered with that, the more confident we can be in decisions, whatever they are. So I'm up for anything on helping to make that, like, bite-sizeable, and then we can help educate our community too, for those that are interested, probably how people are, but it just helps us, I don't know. Funding is a big deal.
That could very easily be a, a 45-minute topic of a work session.
Yeah.
I think that's absolutely something that we could do. We could do a school funding 101 workshop.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think it would be really interesting. Everybody else, okay?
Yes.
Okay, Matt? Is he good doing?
Yep, no, that's just fine.
I think things are changing in St. Paul a little bit. I mean, you've still got the House controlled by the Democrats, and the Senate is still Republican for now, and the governor is actually trying to do something a little bit different with that. He wants to make us not to have levy referendums all the time. He thinks, he wants to make that rare, and he wants to structure something differently. Now, getting the two sides to agree on that makes it a little more complicated, but I'd love to see that, where we don't have to take our local taxpayers' money all the time to fix something or do this or that.